I call this meeting of your Norc City Council order. May 21st, 2018. I'll please call the roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Labutus.
Here.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
President.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
And Mr. Fennell.
Here.
We have nine here this evening. Next on the agenda is the invitation by Mr. Labutus, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly fathers, we come to pray this evening. We thank you for the beautiful day you've given us and the blessings that you've given us. I ask that you be especially with the families, residents of Santa Fe, Texas, that you would be with that, the families, the community, and provide healing in that community. I also ask that you be with our children as they are getting close to the end of their school year. I would ask for protection for them and for a safe and happy summer. Be with us this evening in all that we do and say and help our, give us your vision for this city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Paul Williams.
Your pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Williams. Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I would ask that we excuse Mr. Lang this evening.
Second. Motion to excuse Mr. Lang, second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Mr. Bub.
Yes, Mr. President. I will give standing resolution 18-34 this evening regarding the Fairway Estates subdivision that serves on the homeowners association.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Anyone else? Next on the agenda, we have the minutes of our May 7th, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Motion. Second, Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have four reports of standing committees this evening. One from finance, one from street, one from service, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, reports from city officials. We have two this evening. One from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, our operating report for the period ending April 30th, 2018, and one from Barb Jobs, our city income tax administrator, the income tax report for the months of February, March, and April, 2018. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have no communications this evening. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your chance to be heard. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and I'll call you forward. Mr. Labutus.
My name is William Butcher, 263 Union Street. There's one comment I'd like to make tonight. I heard so much about this new fire station going on Cherry Valley Road. And what I see, what I look at, the city of Newark, Division of Fire, they would like to have a brand-new fire station go out that way. I don't see why not. We can't have a fire station out to the Cherry Valley Road. I see nothing wrong with it. It depends how much of a fight they give, what we're looking at. But what I see, what I look at, we do need more fire stations here in the city. I don't know what's going to happen to the old fire station up there on East Main Street. But I'd like to see a brand-new fire station go out that way with Newark City Council's blessing. And I hope that you guys pass that new fire station February tonight. But in fact, we are under a severe thunderstorm watch till 10:00 tonight. But with the sun setting right now, most of it might be dying out before the night does get here. When our next one will come be? We'll talk about that in my next 10-month forecast.
Thank you, William. Anyone else for this first section? Ms. Moran? Anybody else for this first section?
Paul Moran, 63 North 4th Street. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Have a couple items. One is the old K-9 facility on Iron Avenue where police used to train their dogs for years. I used to watch them and see them do their different training things over there. The fence is completely covered in overgrowth. There's tall grass throughout the whole facility. There's two structures that are falling down. Right nearby it, on the same side of the road, there's two or three truckloads of trash, all-on-air mattresses, trash coat, food, all along there. I mean, it stinks. I mean, it's become an eyesore, that section of the city. And it's really a disgrace with all this new stuff going on. Then we have this section of the city that's just so run down. I mean, don't the police or fire department or street department ever drive by and see this disgusting stuff? Or they just blown it off because it's not an important area? So, I want to say on that. Next, the new fire station I'll talk on briefly. I look forward to become a part-time fire station after it's open with personnel being used from Hollander Street and there. City's going to operate two part-time fire stations because people are going to be going back and forth probably, keep them both open. Now, how a city can operate part-time fire stations? I mean, they all should be full-time, 24/7, well, fully staffed. I mean, you know, otherwise, a part-time station, we're going to rely more on our neighboring departments to make runs because of fewer people at the Hollander Street Station. Is that fair to them? Or, you know, I know there's mutual tracks and they have their runs and fires, just like we do. But I just can't see how a fire station is going to be coming down on a part-time basis. Now, I'm not against a new fire station, but just how it's going to be manned is my only concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next, we have ordinances on the second reading, 18-10.
Ordinance 18-10 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, and ordinance amending Chapter 618 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio with regard to city-owned or operated dog parks.
You've heard the second reading of 18-10. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Labutus.
Mr. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-10.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-10?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
Working on the legislation. I'm really encouraged at the development that's going on within the city of Newark. So, we have planned a dog park at Everett as well as a dog park at Flori. So, this is really to clean up the laws that are on the books to ensure that we don't have any unnecessary or contradictory legislation out there to ensure that the administration has the authority to open these as well as users to understand the rules and the guidelines and what is to be expected in using these parks.
Mr. Labutus, did you hear any data? I thought I might have heard you, but Mr. Frazier was quite loud. Did I hear? Did I hear Mr. Frazier? Anyone else? I'll please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-10 passes 9-0. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 18-12.
Ordinance 18-12 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance enacting amendments to Newark sewer use and sewer charges, ordinance 91-59, directing limited publications of the sewer use and sewer charges ordinance.
18-12 will be held for two weeks for our next reading, for our next meeting. 18-13.
Ordinance 18-13 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance ranking professional design firms and authorizing the director of public service to negotiate agreement for architectural services for fire station construction projects.
18-13 will be held for two weeks through June 4th for our next meeting. Next, we have 18-14.
Ordinance 18-14 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 2250 Hornsill Road, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence zoning district to planned unit development zoning district.
18-14 will refer to planning commission and then back to us. Next, on the first reading, we have 18-15.
Ordinance 18-15 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and ordinance vacating a 10-foot wide alley as shown on the flat of the Avalon allotment as recorded in Flat Book 3, Page 82 of the Lincoln County Flat Records, said alley running west from Showman Avenue located south of Cherry Valley Road.
And 18-15 will be held for two weeks through our June 4th reading. Next, resolutions on the second reading, 18-32.
Resolution 18-32 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Labutus, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-32. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 18-32.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 18-32? Seeing none, I'll please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-32 passes 9-0. Next on the second reading, we have 18-33.
Resolution 18-33 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-33. What does you wish?
Mr. President, I would to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on 18-33? Seeing none, I'll please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-33 passes 9-0. Finally, on the second reading, we have 18-34.
Resolution 18-34 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, a resolution declaring the necessity of improving properties in the budding Fairway Estates subdivision in a long Hornsill Road by upgrading the existing sanitary sewer system and installing a new gravity sewer system and the necessary appendices.
You've heard the second reading of 18-34. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-34.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-34? Seeing none, I'll please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Stand.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-34 passes 8. Yes, and one of stand. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 18-35.
Resolution 18-35 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Fennell, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
I wanted to ask Mr. Fennell to print. 18-35 will be held for two weeks for our June 4th meeting. Next, we have 18-36.
18-36 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Fennell or Raff, I'm not sure who that is, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office for federal fiscal year 2019 Ohio traffic safety grants programs, selective traffic enforcement year, and the impaired driving enforcement program.
18-36 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. Just point of order, 18-35, we do have a payout there. Was that, were we going to waive the two-day reading rule on that? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
It was Rogers', but he didn't have it expedited. Your payout, yeah. It wasn't marked.
I'll waive the two-day reading rule.
You want that waived, Roger? I can't hear it.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want it waived or not?
Should be waived.
Should be waived. Okay, we're going to go back and revisit 18-35. Let's read 18-35 again and we'll just start again.
Resolution 18-35 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Fennell, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
Mr. Frazier.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Frazier. Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 18-35?
Typically.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Tell us why you're waiving the two-day reading rule.
Typically with payouts in order to expedite it, to get people their money, we expedite this on a routine basis.
I'll please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is being waived, Mr. Frazier.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-35.
Motion by Mr. Frazier to adopt 18-35.
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Is there any other discussion on 18-35? Seeing none, I'll please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-35 passes 9-0. Now, on the first reading, we're going to move on to 18-37.
Resolution 18-37 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Cost, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contract subject to the appropriation of funds for the off-site disposal of lime sludge from Lagoon Number Three at Newark's Water Treatment Plant.
18-37 will be held for two weeks for our second reading through June 4th. Next, we have 18-38.
Resolution 18-38 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Cost, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the City of Newark for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities in septic optimization project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
18-38 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. Next, we have 18-39.
18-39 by Mr. Cost, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Hall.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule.
Second.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Ms. Hall, second by Mr. Frazier, Ms. Hall.
I'm assuming that it's the timing.
I'll please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is being waived, Ms. Hall.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion, any other discussion on 18-39? Seeing none, I'll please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-39 passes 9-0. Next, we go on to 18-40.
Resolution 18-40 by Mr. Cost, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
18-40 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. And finally this evening on the first reading, and our last piece of legislation is 18-41.
Resolution 18-41 by Mr. Marmee and Mr. Cost, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 18-41.
Motion by Mr. Marmee to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mr. Frazier, Ms. Marmee.
Yes, we have some bills that are overdue actually, and we need to expedite this in order to pay them.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. I'll please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is being waived, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 18-41.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-41? Seeing none, I'll please call the roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
18-41 passes 9-0. And that concludes our legislative session. Thank you for your attention. Next, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand so I can call you forward. We'll go with Mr. Butcher first, hang on. Come on, Wayne. Ma'am, let me do Wayne first and then you come in.
My name is Avril Wayne Butcher, 263 Union Street. There's one good question. I'd like to know when Union Street's going to get paved. And there's another question on the corner of Sixth and West Main Street. How comes there are no right turns on red sign? The corner of West Main and Sixth. I'd have Newark City Council's response to that. That passed.
Thank you, Wayne.
Rochelle Boland Smith, 237 Violet Court. I was wondering whether there was a way since it's summer is upon us to inform the public about responsibilities in using bicycles and helmets particularly for children and the sort of thing. I see a lot of people going in the wrong direction on, and that sort of thing, and it seems like maybe we can get the paper and perhaps other news media to help us with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else beside David?
Hi, my name's Laura Candy. I live 1120 Wintermead Avenue, and I'm addressing the gazebo again. You guys are supposed to be putting it back together. I would appreciate if you put it back together down on the court square where it should be. We had over 1,000 signatures of people that would like it back down there. And I don't see what the cost would be to put it up where you guys are planning on putting it up or on the court square. There'd be no difference in cost there. It was your mistake, and I think you should fix it, make it right with the public. Thank you.
David McElruff, 153 North 39th Street, Newark, speaking as IFF Local 109, president regarding 18-13. I was going to wait for two weeks, but I'm on duty, so I won't be here, so I wanted to make a few comments. I guess the main thing I want to do is caution the council in moving forward on something that is, we haven't accounted for how we're going to staff, how we're going to provide equipment. Nothing's been said. I haven't seen a figure on what the architectural cost is, whether that's a minimal amount. We certainly are not arguing a need for that station. There is a need out there, but until we have a plan in place, well, it said two weeks ago, we were going to take from the north end. That's not acceptable. We've already took from the east end and shut down that station. And now, at least what I heard two weeks ago was the plan was to now take some more people from the north end all to open a new station. I think we need a better plan, and council needs to work on figuring out how we're going to properly staff it and buy equipment for it before we move forward with a yet another new station. So, just wanted to share my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the administration? Mr. Marmee.
If you'll kindly give me one more minute to talk to you. You might recall last month, we did a neighborhood cleanup, the Department of Development and Director Baum's Property Maintenance Department combined, and did it in D. Hall's ward. We didn't, took out about two 30-yard dumpsters of trash and metal and so forth. We're gonna do this again. We're going into Mr. Frazier's ward this time, pretty much north of Route 16, up to North Street, and then to the east, we're gonna go about out to Case Avenue, into the west, Central Avenue. So, if you can kind of picture that map area, that's our designated area. Again, we'll notice find everybody by mail who are residents in that area. We're gonna do a little bit different twist. We're actually gonna use some dump trucks. This was Jeff Hotchkiss's idea, to load the trash in rather than the dumpsters, and we're actually gonna take the trucks up and down the streets. And you can, we're gonna take it one step further, and people can call into the Department of Development and schedule a pickup. So, we're really trying to be very customer service oriented on this, and really see if we can increase our results even more. So, that's gonna take place on June the 9th, June the 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And again, it's residential-only pickup, and feel free to pass the number of the Department of Development out at 670-7530, and we'll be glad to help you take care of any residential trash items, other than anything that would be hazardous materials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Assistant Hall Director, clip in here.
I will respectfully decline. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fair offer, opportunity. You're precious.
This morning, we proudly swore in two new firefighters down at Newark Fire Station Number 1, Taylor Amateur and Scott Smith. They come with some experience, which is a wonderful addition to our firefighting team. Wish them the best of luck in the future with our Division of Fire. And also, the last two weeks, we've had some students volunteering their times in the area. Graham Gilchrist Academy came downtown and probably went out in a couple parks, spent almost six-hour day, partially cleaning and waxing our downtown sculptures, which is great, and also on the bike path, which is about an annual thing to try to keep those in great shape. And also, we had Newark High Athletic Teens down cleaning the parks last week.